Good evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to invite the Boy Scouts up front to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll be bashful. It's okay, guys.
Scouts salute hand over heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everyone. Tonight is our meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We hold these twice a month to do the town's business. We begin each meeting with public audience, and for our rules adopted in December 2013, we invite members of the public to speak for up to five minutes. And with that, we'll begin with public audience. I'll go from right to left this time. Mr. Kalishman.
Thank you for allowing me to address the Board of Selectmen and to put my congratulations to the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts of America. And you're doing a great job. Continue your good work. And of course, I can't miss without mentioning Mr. Lanza, our fundraiser for the monument. The first thing I'll get to is I'd like to read an announcement from the Secretary of State, State of Connecticut, dated April 7th. Robert H. Kalishman, Simsbury. Dear Mr. Kalishman, congratulations. The nominating position filed with his office on behalf of the following candidate for the office listed above as a petitioning candidate has been examined as required by law and is hereby approved. First Selectman Robert H. Kalishman, 971 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070. Such candidate is therefore qualified to appear on the ballot for the forthcoming office to be contested at the municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015, as a petitioning candidate. Sincerely, Dennis W. Merle, Secretary of State. And that's it. And I was going through my notes, and I thought, out of respect to Mr. Lanza and the veterans, I would bring this to your attention. It seems to me, a month or so ago, Westminster School wrote a letter to this board via the First Selectman indicating that the money that they give yearly to the town of Simsbury that a portion thereof, or all of thereof, I think it's $120,000, be given to the monument. At the time, it was mentioned it was under consideration, but I have never heard anything about the consideration. It's never been discussed in public, and I suspect that you're not going to give it to them. That's my suspicion. That's my opinion. I don't think you're going to give it to them, in view of the circumstances. Secondly, I have a memo turned out in support. This is a letter I wrote to the DAR, and in my letter, I referred to the donations. This money, thank again for thinking of Simsbury veterans. This money you gave and asked it be passed on to the Veterans Monument people. This money, 114,000, is not for me or for veterans. This is the letter I wrote to the master at Westminster, Mr. Phillips, I think his name is. And I said, "The money wasn't for me, because I was born in Hartford, and a lot of people, especially the group up in Terrifield, don't recognize me." And I don't care. Frankly, I don't care. But I do care about the 114,000 going to the monuments down here. If we have money, I know this, Mr. Tonner's here, if we have $90,000 to give to the golf course, we certainly should have 114,000 that Westminster wants to run through your books and give to the veterans. Now, I think enough has been enough about that, but I would like you to comment on it. The next thing that we have here is that the Personnel Board, Personal Subcommittee Public Hearing for First Selectman, the salary. This was a scam that was performed on most people in Simsbury regarding the $132,000 salary being cut. And you singled out one man that sits on this board. You singled out his business, and you tried to cut his throat. And it was wrong. And the rumor around town was people were canceling their garbage pickup because they wanted to get back at him because he had voted to cut the First Selectwoman's salary. It was wrong. It was a scam, and it still is a scam. And I stand by what I say.
Mr. Kalishman, if you could, you've got about 15 seconds.
Thank you very much.
You have about 15 seconds if you have a final comment.
Pardon?
You have about 15 seconds if you have a final comment.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to do is remind you once again, this is from Debbie O'Brien. She lives in Simsbury. And she mentioned, "I have lived in Simsbury where the property tax is oppressive, and then they have the nerve to charge us car and surtax, trying to fund all the benefits of state employees has overtaxed the budget." And she goes on to say that.
Thank you.
In conclusion, what I'm going to say is, you voted for too much tax. You're overtaxing the people. You're putting money in reserve, and the proof of it is, if you have money for reserve, you're overtaxing the people.
Thank you, Mr. Kalishman. Going from this side to this side. Ms. Coe?
As a candidate for First Selectman, a 40-year resident of Simsbury, I am a proponent of having a professional town manager for Simsbury. We cannot allow a small lobby group to determine the allocation of our limited resources. First Selectman Lisa Hevner is presenting a smoke and mirrors budget to the people under the guise of no increase in taxes. Why did First Selectman Lisa Hevner hug the employees for presenting the budgets? Does every professional manager hug employees for serving the people? There is $210,000 in expenditures in the capital improvement project that will be paid by using the general fund. These expenditures shall be in the operating budget, not capital expenditures. Using the general fund as a sludge fund and bonding improvements is not fiscally responsible. This will encumber the future budgets and paybacks. Are all of these budgets, projects necessary? Many of these expenditures have been approved by the Finance Board without a referendum vote. We paid $11 million for the Ethel Walker Schools property for open space, and now First Selectman Lisa Hevner is dissecting the property for horses and trails that are costly and will have to be maintained over the years. The cost for this project is $233,000. When we were asked to vote for the $11 million of open space, we were not told that we will have to pay for the Ethel Walker Schools equestrian trails. The elite Ethel Walker School is tax exempt but makes no contributions to the town, as does Westminster School, but wants the Simsbury taxpayers to pay for horse trails that will impact the Africa that we were told we must protect. As a newbie to the First Selectman's job, Lisa Hevner was not aware that the Windery Road Services are treated with salt and molasses brine, not sand, as stated at the budget hearing. When did First Selectman Lisa Hevner dry over sand on Simsbury roads? The Board is being asked to pay $5,000 for private performing arts groups in hopes they can find someone to underwrite the cost. Why should we front money for fireworks and concerts since the PAC has not submitted their audit report from last year? Show me the money. The private performing arts group is promoting several concerts that require eight to 10 police officers to oversee crowd control. This is placing pressure on police departments with extra duties and long hours of work, creating undue stress. Many concert goers come early to tailgate with excessive alcohol consumption prior to the concert, and some people remain in the parking lot to enjoy the music without paying for the tickets. People parking at Vincent's Funeral Home can view the concert stage from that location without paying for tickets. How is the private performing arts staff monitoring these actions by the public? Many veterans have served our country to give everyone the right to petition the government without encumbrances. As a petitioning candidate for First Selectman, I was told that I had to receive an opinion from Town Attorney on where, how, and when I can promote my campaign on public property. The opinion that First Selectman Lisa Hevner received, approved, and forwarded to me limits not only my constitutional rights, but all people petitioning the government. The opinion states, and I quote, "The town government may regulate speech in a public forum through content neutralized fine place manner restrictions. The town may regulate the areas for collection activities and the hours of the collection." End quote. Is First Selectman Lisa Hevner going to spray paint town parks with areas for public forum and create an ordinance for time and place? How can we pledge allegiance to the flag at every meeting when this opinion, approved by First Selectman Lisa Hevner, limits the people's constitutional rights? It appears that Bank of America has notified the town that they have a safe deposit box that has now delinquent charges of $300. Why has there been inactivity on a safe deposit box for years, and what has been placed inside? Who has access to the box? Does the town have more safe deposit boxes than other banks? Why the need for secrecy? I recently went to the Conservation Commission meeting to listen to the decision on the town's master plan for the meadows. They went ballistic when they heard all the activities that were proposed. As a result of their dismay, they sent a scathing letter to First Selectman Lisa Hevner, states, and I quote, "We have been dismayed alarm by what the consultant calls 'South Meadows improvements.'" End quote. Briefly, these include creation of a fairground in the form of a maintained turf meadow and 200-space gravel parking lot, and a paved road from the boathouse to the fairground in the parking lot. The site is marred by a raised gravel road that the town built illegally without the required wetlands permits in 2010. End quote. How can all these improvements be made in the wetlands in a critical habitat area?
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
Does the senior center include any plans?
It's been five minutes. Thank you. Could you just wrap it up, please?
Will the senior center destroy the wetlands and permits again to be ignored?
Thank you, Ms. Coe. We appreciate your comments.
The senior center should remain at Eno Hall, as the senior center designated.
Ms. Coe, you're out of order, and you're being rude.
The Performing Arts Center is a political tsunami.
Please conclude your own.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
I know you were very interested in what I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
Thank you. I appreciate your effort.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Benardzik. Yeah, go on this way.
Ms. Benardzik, 119 East Sweetox Street. I'm here to talk about two things. The first thing is, what a surprise land use. I was really happy to see in Newington that, after some deliberation, the town was able to come to the conclusion that the residents really wanted Cedar Mountain to be open space. So they're working to try to find grants in various ways to pay for it. So I think, once the residents really acknowledge certain things, it's really nice that we try to accommodate them, to not necessarily raise taxes, but by creative ways, get things done for them, such as open space, and such as a senior center and various things. Second thing I want to talk about is using political power for good. In the last few years, I have had my life turned upside down due to some political payback I received. And when you're in a political office, you can use power for good, or you can use it for evil. And if you use it for good, it's really constructive. And what's been disappointing to me is that it is really, really mind-boggling to go through what happened to me. So if you really channel yourself, like if all the bad guys in the world channeled their really creative bad activities into trying to, you know, steal people's credit card information into something good, everything would be really, really good. So I think a lesson could be learned that maybe you guys each pick a certain amount of really nice things to do, you know, this year. And I'm not pointing to any of you guys, per se, but it's just disturbing to know what has happened to me, and it'll all be coming out eventually, and it's just really, really disheartening. And so, it's kind of crazy. And I was diagnosed last week with a tumor, and the doctor said to me, "Do you have any stress in your life?" And I said, "Yeah, the last years have been really stressful." So I'm starting to think about what I'm going to name the tumor, and I think I'm going to name it after all the people who were removed in the last few years.
Thank you, Sue. I'm sorry for your condition. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Richman?
Good evening. I'm David Richman. I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, and I've handed you guys some of the things we're working on briefly. Anyone in the audience is always invited to the Chamber events. There's several events coming up in April. Most of them are during school, so the Boy Scouts, you guys stay in school, you can come after school, clean up. One of the good things we're doing, I think some of the Board of Selectmen attend, we have the Lunch and Learn at Henry James. We've got the Health and Wellness Task Course. Participated in Simsbury Bike to Work Day on Friday, May 15th. The Relay for Life is coming back, Department of High School. One of the coolest things we're doing is the Spontacular Chili Challenge on Halloween. We're looking for sponsors and vendors. It should be bringing in a tremendous amount of people into town. So we've been active, and we meet once a month, first or second Tuesday of the month, so that would be tomorrow. So this is just giving you guys an idea of what we've been doing. And now, my name's David Richman, 104 Ridge Drive, West Simsbury, Connecticut, and I get hugs from the First Selectman, and I like that.
He'll work for the town.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for public about?
Sorry, I was looking at my granddaughter. I have a side tray. Is this for me?
Yeah, yours.
Sorry, this is the first time I think you've ever given me any of this. It scares me. It makes me tremble, actually. Well, I don't know how to follow this very well, but I miss you guys. Every time I come up here, I think of all the hours with Tom, and how much it meant to me at the time. So I'm here to talk to you about the Performing Arts Center, just briefly, and about an event that we have been coming up, and I happen to have some tickets. I just happened to have one. For our first-of-the-year fundraiser, Ferg might have some tickets, too. In fact, I see you have too many. Why aren't those sold by now? So our fundraiser is April 23rd. It's at Hot Meadow from 6:00 to 8:00. And it's, as last year, it's the time when we're going to announce our season, update people on our architectural project to review different opportunities to possibly cover, to some degree, some of the facility. And it's going to be a great evening. And we're going to have people there from the Bushnell, which now the Bushnell and the Hartford Symphony are united. So the Bushnell folks are going to be there together with the Hartford Symphony's artistic director, and we're going to have an opportunity to learn about what's going on this summer in addition to the five concerts from the Hartford Symphony, which are going to be awesome. So last year, we had a great season. We made money. Joan, you'll be happy about that. And I think you'll be happy about that. I actually positive about that. But we had a great year, a great season, first year as a private 501(c)(3). This is our second year. We hope everybody will help us by attending. We had over 200 people last year at this event, and so we're hoping to repeat that, and it's a great kickoff to a wonderful season. Ferg handed me this poster, which I've had no time to review, but I will tell you that on June 14th, the Abbott Brothers will be here. On July 8th, slightly stupid, that's not a reflection of my intelligence. It's actually a group that's very popular with young people. The Beach Boys will be here August 12th, performing with the Symphony, by the way, but not part of the five concerts of the Symphony. So this is a separate event. And then Willie Nelson and the Old Chrome Medicine Show group will be here on August 22nd. So those are some of the outside concerts. We also have September Fest and all the other wonderful things that go on. But I want you to know about it, and I want you to make plans to be there Thursday, April 23rd, from 6:00 to 8:00, at Hot Meadow Country Club. It'll be a great night.
Bob, what is the website for the Performing Arts Center?
It's simsburymeadows.com.
Thank you.
Actually, on Facebook, it's Simsbury Meadows. You have to kind of, there are a number of different Simsbury logins. So if you go on Facebook, it's Simsbury Meadows. Make sure you do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who has a comment? Okay, we will move on to presentations, then. Our first one is very exciting. We have with us tonight Selena Durungs, who recently competed in the Special Olympics Nationals representing the state of Connecticut in New Jersey. Would you like to come up, please, Selena? We are pleased to announce, if you can see, if you'll face the audience, you can see that she won three medals, two gold and one bronze. And the fifth... But even perhaps more exciting than that, she's...
Going to Worlds.
She's going to Worlds.
Team USA.
Yeah.
Only one from Connecticut swimming.
Oh, so we're thrilled to have you there, and you're going to be competing in four races, right?
Yes.
You want to tell us?
The 200 freestyle, the 200 breaststroke, the 100 IM, and a 1x400 relay.
So we are so proud of you, and we wanted to give you some things to wish you well because you're going to LA representing the great town of Simsbury. We wanted to make sure you had a hat, and then these flowers to wish you good luck.
Thank you very much.
You have the support of the entire town of Simsbury, and we are so pleased and proud for you.
Thank you. Thank you for honoring me. Thank you.
The best thing about this job is that we get to honor people in our community who represent us well and step up and do something great for the community. So thank you. We appreciate that. We have before us a proclamation tonight. It is Autism Awareness Month, and you may have noticed around town, people have houses lit up with blue, and that's in recognition of people with autism and to raise awareness about autism. The CDC identifies about one out of 68 children as on the autism spectrum, and approximately 3 million individuals in the U.S. are on the spectrum. Today, we have a proclamation on autism awareness that I'll ask Cheryl to read.
Thank you. Before I start, I'd like to recognize Ed Lamontaine. He's the chairman of the Aging and Disability Commission here in Simsbury, who does many good things here in town to promote autism awareness year-round. Proclamation of autism awareness. Whereas autism, the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States affecting more than 3 million people, is an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response, and whereas autism is the result of a neurological disorder that affects the normal functioning of the human brain and can affect anyone regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or socioeconomic background, and whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal as well as nonverbal communication, and whereas the effort to address autism continues, doctors, therapists, and educators can help persons with autism overcome or adjust to its challenges and provide early, accurate diagnosis and the resulting appropriate education, intervention, and therapy that are vital to the future growth and development. And whereas ensuring that all persons living with autism have access to lifelong care and services needed to pursue the full measure of personal happiness and achieve their greatest potential, and whereas the town of Simsbury is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month and World Autism Awareness Day in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder, therefore, I, Lisa Hevner, First Selectman, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Autism Awareness Month and April 2nd, 2015, as World Autism Awareness Day in Simsbury, to raise public awareness of autism and the myriad of issues surrounding autism, as well as to increase knowledge of the programs that have been and are being developed to support individuals with autism and their families. In witness whereof, I have placed my seal and the great seal of the town of Simsbury, dated the second day of April, 2015. Lisa Alhavner, First Selectman.
Thank you. Ed, did you want to say anything?
I just like to make the comment that Cheryl mentioned April 2nd was World Autism Day, and actually, the world went blue. And it was kind of interesting because some of the landmarks, Trafalgar Square in London, Empire State Building, but more interest, I thought, was Egypt, that they lit the Pyramids of Giza and the Sphinx in blue. So if a thorough world country can recognize autism, then it's a good thing. On behalf of the Commission, I want to thank the town for recognizing autism.
Thanks, Ed. It's our pleasure to do this. You'll notice there's a puzzle piece outside of Eno, and Eno has a lamp with blue light on it, in recognition of autism awareness. So thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that. And tonight, we have a special announcement to make, which has actually already been made, but we're going to recognize it formally at the Board of Selectmen. We are very pleased to celebrate the awarding of the Small Towns Economic Assistance Program, or STEEP grant, to the town of Simsbury in the amount of $150,000 to help fund the Veterans' Memorial. Some time ago, Representative Hampton suggested to the First Selectman, Mary Glassman, that the town apply for this grant. This application had the unanimous support of this board, the Board of Selectmen. Only towns can apply for these grants, so we are pleased to partner with our local veterans, and I'd like to thank everyone who had a part in this. Jeff Shea, our town engineer, our veterans, I'd like to ask them to come up at this time. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I see some veterans who are not up here.
Congratulations. Thank you. Good job.
Anytime.
Len, can you introduce the veterans?
Congratulations. That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. I know, I know. I could be a hug, but...
Lisa, Representative Hampton should be up.
Yeah, he's coming up. And I'd also like to invite up Representative Hamptons. Senator Whitco's could not be with us tonight.
I give you a hug, but you're not welcome.
Thank you. Good job, John. Thank you.
Len, could you say a couple of words and introduce the veterans, and then I'll let Mr. Hampton speak?
It cannot inform me to be able to accept the award, the grant.
Actually, give you the letter, recognizing it.
On behalf of all of the members of the Veterans of Foreign Awards and the American League in Simsbury, thank you very much for all of your efforts. On the far right, Ray Jennings, Bruce Elliott, John Fox, not veteran. John Hampton, of course.
John, would you like...
I didn't bring the check.
John, this is a state grant. Would you like to say a couple of words about the...
Yes, it's a great day for Simsbury, and these men to my right, the incredible Band of Brothers that worked so hard on this to build the dream into a reality, and I want to thank the town, the Board of Selectmen, for making the application. Senator Whitco's and I worked together to promote and advance this grant. I want to thank the governor for bestowing the grant on the town of Simsbury. I did not bring the check with me, but it is in the mail. But I want to thank you for your vision. I want to thank all the residents of town and the corporations and volunteers that have been part of this Simsbury Main Street partnership. And this will be a glorious memorial, a place of remembrance and honor to the 104 veterans. Let's hope and pray that we never add to it, but it'll be a wonderful site for recollection. And to thank all of you and to all of our brave men and women who, across the generations, have worked so hard to keep this free. But every day is a day to wake up and thank our veterans for this opportunity to be free, to have open and transparent government, the gifts you have given us, to assemble, free speech, worship where we want to worship. It gives me goosebumps every day. So this memorial will be a lasting monument, but your record of achievement is such a blessing. And all our veterans and all our brave men and women across the land that we thank now for keeping our society free. And to all the young people here, just keep the flame going and always remember what a blessing your government is and your democracy. So it's a great day for Simsbury. Congratulations. And we're going to break ground when?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. Very nice.
John, again. On behalf of all of us, thank you for all your efforts. Talk about a couple of guys who go back a long, long while.
My grammar school principal is so scary. Doctor lunch.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very appreciate it.
Congratulations, and we're gonna break ground when?
Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, very nice.
John, again.
On behalf of all of us, thank you for all your efforts.
Talk about a couple of guys who go back a long, long way.
My grammar school principal is so scary. Doctor lunch.
Thank you, gentlemen. Very appreciate it. Well, thank you for those words, John, and to our veterans, they did a tremendous job fundraising. The town was able to step in and help with some of that, closing the gap. So we are pleased that they have the amount of money they need. I think it's a real example of what a community can do when they work together. We had individuals who made donations. We had veterans who put their heart and soul into this. The town gave its unanimous support to this program. The state gave its support to this program. So we're very pleased and proud to be part of this community. We'll turn now to the First Selectmen's report. I wanted to announce that Simsbury's first Innovation Fair will be held on Saturday, April 25th, from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. This will be an exciting day in Simsbury. It will be held at the library, the Historic Society downtown, and at the North End Village by the Wagner Ford area. And you'll see all sorts of interesting things. At the high school, you can view student projects in science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And those are the STEAM subjects. In the North Village, you'll learn about innovations in transportation and see a car show. You can also find a wide variety of displays right in town, including Al D'Agosto is doing a, working with local artists to do a piece of art made totally out of petals, flower petals. This is something that they do in Italy, and he's bringing it to Simsbury, so we're excited to see how that looks. The Historic Society will have a number of displays as well. I would like to thank everyone again who came together. This was, you know, the town working with local volunteers and communities and nonprofits. And it's one of those things, if you see stuff you don't like or you want to make the town better, you can. And people do, and we are so appreciative when that happens. So thank you for all of them. I wanted to remind folks that Hometown Hero nominations are due April 23rd. If you need an application, you can get them online or pick them up in the First Selectmen's office. It's time to start to get in shape in Bike Month, and I'm pleased to announce to the Board of Selectmen-
Excuse me?
That the Board of Selectmen will be holding a bike ride at 1:00 p.m. on May 1st, starting right here at Town Hall. And that's always an exciting trip, and it almost always ends in ice cream. So we do, anyone who is interested in coming to that, that's how they get me on a bike, with the promise of ice cream. So we will be doing this, and I'm sure the Board of Selectmen is happy to hear this.
When is it?
May 1st at 1:00 p.m.
I run?
You can run, absolutely.
Thank you.
As long as you go slow.
No, he doesn't need to go slow.
I'll be there with him.
Cheryl and I bring up the rear.
That's right, Lisa and I are all in there.
If you want more information about the full list of events of Bike Month, you can find those at www.simsberrybike.com. And you'll be amazed at all that the town offers. It's a very exciting month. And again, all by volunteers who step up to make the community better. So we'd like to thank them. I also wanted to announce that the Whitewater Triple Crown Kayak Competition at Terrifield Gorge will be that same weekend, April 25th and 26th. If you haven't had a chance to go down there and see it, it really is amazing to watch, it's very exciting. And I encourage everyone to check it out. You can get information on this event at tvilletriplecrown.com. I'm announcing that I'm holding another First Selectmen's Open House next Monday, from 4:30 to 6:00, and I invite everyone to come on down. I will have cookies, and I invite you to come, grab a cookie, tell me what's on your mind, let me know what issues matter to you. Finally, on to the budget. Last week, the Board of Finance held its public hearing on the town and Board of Education budgets. All budgets are online, and you can read them. They are open and transparent. Everything we have, you have, you can look at them online. The Board of Finance voted to move the fiscal year 2016 budget forward to referendum. And tonight, the Board of Selectmen will take final steps to set the referendum date, place, and approve questions for the referendum, and take a few other minor steps that we need to do to move this process along. I would like to thank, first of all, the Board of Selectmen, who worked in a very collaborative and, I think, successful and productive manner. The Board of Finance, the Board of Education, department heads, town staff, and the people in the public who gave us their input and let us know what mattered to them. So thanks to everyone who participated in this. And that's what I have tonight on that, and we are moving on.
Lisa, you left out the most important part.
What did I leave out?
What's the tax increase gonna be?
Oh, the tax increase, there's not gonna be one.
Exactly. Well done.
So this will actually be the second year in a row that we haven't had a tax increase. It's the first time in the town's history. Last year was the first time that we could find record of there not being a tax increase. This is the second year in a row. And I just want to emphasize that that could not have been done without the collaborative work of this board, working with the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, department heads and town staff. It really was a team effort. And to the extent people have questions on it, come to my open house, ask me, I'll show you the book. We can go through it line by line, or it's also online on the town website, so anyone can see what we've been doing. Now, how's that, John?
It was good.
Moving on.
You wanna get in shape, you can run with me this weekend, though.
Yeah, yeah. Is there, only if there's ice cream involved, okay.
Buy you an ice cream.
I need to find an excuse, someone help me out.
It's only a 17-gift.
Yeah, okay. You have before you a motion to approve tax refunds. May I have a motion to approve $5,483.18 in tax refunds?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion is approved unanimously. The second before us is to approve several Eagle Scout projects to town parks. And we are very excited to welcome Eagle Scouts. Martin Luther King has often said, the most urgent question we have is how will we serve? And when we look at what you are doing tonight, coming here, instead of being a cynic or a critic, you're looking at the community and saying, what can I do? And you have come up with wonderful solutions, and we are so proud to have you here. And Jerry, would you like to introduce them, and we'll go through the projects?
I will, thank you, Lisa. As you said, we've had the benefit of many great projects from Eagle Scouts in the community over the years. Jay Judd Look is here with Troop 76, and I've had the good fortune to work with Jay, and he's worked very, very closely with the Scouts, you know, kind of ushering them through the process. And, you know, because of that, we've had, you know, just a great many projects that have benefited the community. At the March 26 Culture Park and Recreation Commission meeting, we did have four presentations. We have two of the Scouts here today. The other two will be presenting at a later date. But all four were, I think, very worthwhile projects. Their presentations were well put together. The commission was very, very impressed, and recommended that they come to the Selectmen for approval. The first one who will be presenting is Will Sickinger.
Should I stand over there?
Yeah, please.
Just like a ticket that'll let us know who's on the back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will. So, Miles Will Sickinger, I'm a junior at Simsbury High School, and my project is a second batting cage at the Town Forest Baseball Field. And the idea just comes from, I've been playing baseball since I've been here 10 years. And I know that two batting cages is always very useful in like pregame and at practice. And right now, Town Forest is the only field that doesn't have one. Like, only has one, all the other fields have two cages. So I just thought this would be a great idea to help give back to Simsbury baseball. Just on like the logistics, the plan is to build between the cages already there and the third base dugout. And I've talked to the constructor of the previous cage, Mr. Kep, and he gave me some tips on just how to improve this one, so to make it better. And that includes just like some wider wood, and some like more support in the middle of each frame member to support the net, and give it a little bit of longer life. The cage itself is 55 feet long, 12 feet wide, 14 feet high, which is the exact same as the one that's already there. And then there'd be a three-inch layer of stone dust under the cage, and I'll set the posts in two feet of concrete. The projected cost is $2,200, which includes all the wood, stone dust, the net, which is the most expensive part. And it also has like about a $100 bumper in it, just in case there's just like underestimates on the wood or the stone dust. And then I just plan to do my fundraising with, in the spring, do some car washes at Can Drive, and maybe ask for some local businesses for some donations. And the goal is to start constructing it in the summer and finish it by August. But I have my birthday, my 18th birthday is next year, so like something happens, like there's not a push to get it done this summer, but that's the goal. And then just on the back, there's some drawings of like the dimensions of the cage. There's a picture of the Google Maps, you can feel just like a little red box of where it's supposed to go. And then there's a picture of the cage right there, which is kind of just like a reference to what it's gonna look like. And that's it.
Cut stand. Does anyone have any questions for Will? This is, looks like a very exciting project. Thank you.
And our second Eagle Scout presenting will be Rigby Michelson.
Hi. I'm really glad that we talked, before I got up here, we talked about autism awareness and Selena's great achievements. Really, it's really great stuff. And before I start with my spiel, I do have some papers I'd like to give you guys. Here you go.
Thanks, Rigby.
I have two extras. All right. So speaking of Special Olympics, Autism Awareness Month, and all that, there's a very nice, tight-knit community in Simsbury, Connecticut. Families with children who have intellectual disabilities often come together and support each other in really extraordinary ways. How would I know? I have a brother, his name is Sam, we're triplets. He was born with autism, and so that's really affected my life. I mean, we, people in this community, we have birthday parties at each other's houses. We bond in ways that only family members with disabilities can bond. It's forged and strengthened in the Special Olympics programs. Here, kids and adults with intellectual disabilities can practice and compete in sports together uninhibited. It's a very special part of Simsbury that everybody can be proud of. So, there are a lot of great things about Special Olympics I've been doing it for four or five years. And there's a problem that I'd like to give, that I'd like to address and to help give back to the Special Olympics program for helping me so much. There's a lot of gear that goes along with Special Olympics. For golf, we have golf clubs. For track and field, we have, you know, shot putts and javelins and all that kind of stuff. There's gear for swimming, there's gear for bowling, there's snowshoes, there's a ton of stuff. And there isn't one central location to play. It goes in all the coaches' houses. And so in the coaches' houses, it gets lost, it gets broken, and it's kind of an inconvenience for those who have to have it. And so I propose that we build a shed to help house and to keep safe and to keep track of all of this gear. It's gonna be a 10-by-10 shed. It's gonna be in Simsbury Farms. It's gonna be nice and locked up so that only those coaches and officials can have access to it. I have, although I noticed in here somewhere, I got a quote from Minor Lumber, so they'll be prepared, I got a quote from Minor Lumber, it's got my budget. It should be somewhere in the range of $1,500. I was originally not gonna do a window until they told me they'd give me a window for free, so. There you go. So you can see on my sheet I gave you, it does have a little bit, I put it in a who, what, when, where, why, and how format, because that's easy to understand, and I figured you guys appreciate that. And so I-
We really do.
So, you know, so I'm Rigby, I'm Senior Patrol Leader of Troop 76, which means I kind of run the whole troop. And I do a lot of other stuff. And so I told you about the shed, it's gonna be on cement blocks with gravel underneath. And you can see, when I kind of want to start, late April, early May, and I'm gonna take as long as I can, as it takes, but I'm trying to really finish it up by early June. And we'll be meeting every Saturday, but also Sundays, until this job is done. So, I already told you where it is, I basically told you why. And so Special Olympics is gonna fund my project completely. And so, I mean, you guys are really proud of Selena, and what she does is really great. And if you like that, I think this is a great way to keep it going. So, I thought.
We didn't actually know that these two projects were coming together. We didn't plan it that way.
I know, it's just happened to be great coincidence.
It is a wonderful presentation, so thank you for your presentation. Does anyone have any questions for?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much.
Good job, it's fine. Great idea.
Thank you, great presentation by both of you, very well done. I know it's hard to speak in public sometimes, but we appreciate what you did. Jerry, are we gonna be approving all four or just the two that are presented tonight?
You will, you'll be getting the other two at a later date. One of the projects is still being worked on, and the other young man is out of town this week. You will be getting both of them, probably in the near future.
So, but just tonight, we're approving the two?
The two, correct.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Eagle Scout projects for Will Sickinger and Rigby Michelson?
Rigby, thanks, I make that motion.
Seconded.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'd love to have you for the rest of the meeting, but if you need to go, that's perfectly fine, too. Thanks so much, we appreciate your being here. And I just want to point out, these are projects that the town could not have done. So these are things that we really value and appreciate you stepping up to them. We are lucky. Moving on to item number C in your packets. We have a motion to approve public gathering application for the 2015 events, and again, that is Jerry. There are two events, there's the high school graduation on Friday, June 12th, and there is the Rubber Duck Race fundraiser. So Jerry, if you'd like to speak to those, please.
Yes, both came in to go through the public gathering permit process. Sent in my submission, I lean use this from Simsbury High School. Submitted a completed application for high school graduation, and everything is signed off and ready to go. Johanna Merriman of Tooten Hills PTO submitted an application for the Rubber Duck Race fundraiser on the Flower Bridge. Johanna cannot be here tonight, but representatives from the Tooten Hills PTO are here and can speak to the event. At the time her application was submitted, she did not have all her sign-offs. We've been able to get them all secured. So everything is in place.
No sign-offs?
No more sign-offs required, yeah, they're all set to go. We have the insurance coverage that was requested. Maybe they may be able to talk a little about the event. It's the first time doing it down in the area, and they've been working, we had the Flower Bridge Committee also sat in on the meeting, and they're gonna work along with them. work along with them and, you know, we hope, hope for a good event, so.
Do you guys like to say anything about this?
No, the kids are very excited about the event. Looking forward to it. We're taking all the measures to make sure that it's safe for the kids, working with the police department and the fire department. And then there's parent volunteers that are going to be there, helping coordinate it along with, we're having our first aid station within the school, nurse is going to be there. So obviously safety is at the top of our, our list, but the kids are looking forward to it, so it should be a fun event and we can't wait.
Well, thank you for your initial.
If I can just pipe, pipe in here for, for a minute, not just for Tooten Hills, but I think it's a great thing for the town overall. It's, it's been a huge success in other towns. Farmington holds one. Places in Westchester County do. Biggest one that I've come across is San Antonio, Texas, the Riverwalk. So it's a, it's a great way to bring the community together, you know.
So why don't you give us just a teaser? When is it and what time?
It will be the Saturday after.
One more line.
May 29th. May 29th. You guys have the paperwork in front of you there.
May 29th. 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And there's going to be food?
Yes. Some vendors are going to be there. There's going to be like carnival games for the kids to play to keep them occupied until we start the first race.
Thank you. It sounds very creative and we're looking forward to it and appreciate you guys all the work. I know when I spoke to your main contact, she was surprised by how labor-intensive it is to get town approval. And I apologize for that. We've all served on the PTO or in some capacity. So we, we feel your pain, but, and we appreciate you, and we appreciate you going through it so that we can get everything approved. And you did a great job with that. And I know the first time it can be a little confusing, and so we appreciate your taking the time to do this. So with that.
So how big are these ducks?
And then they'll be business ducks as well, sold to buyers.
Oh, those are bigger ones.
Those are big ducks. These will be business ducks sold. If anybody interested, knowing business owners around and would like to purchase one. And then the winner will then receive a golden duck to keep on their business premises for a year and then it'll belong. But the other ones that will raise are about an inch.
Yeah.
Inch high, inch wide. The little ones that you always see in the novelty stores. And they'll, you'll see, we even have a big duck that'll be walking.
Duck mascot.
So we really think it's going to bring a lot to, to the community.
That's very creative. How did you guys come up with this project?
It's all Johanna.
She had seen one in Rhode Island years ago and thought it was a great event, so she decided to try here.
We're excited to see how it goes and wish you the best of luck in it.
Would you want to buy a duck, put with contact, or rent the duck, or raise a duck? Who do we reach out to?
Johanna.
Basically, how are we going to get you the money? Trying to help you.
For the, for a business one?
Yeah.
Personal, I mean, assume it's open.
For anybody?
You're on television. He's giving you a plot.
These get huge. I mean, they probably make like 30 grand in Farmington on this. I mean, they, they, a lot of people get involved. They, these are fun.
So how do you buy?
I'm not buying a bunch of ducks, so.
Oh, I was just going to hand you the cards.
Yeah, just here, here. I'll take one. There we go. All right. SC TG. Who will be the lucky duck?
So those will be around town and stuff, so people.
Yes. And if you need any more, you can get it from Tooten Hills.
We can put these on the paint outside.
Oh, great.
Town halls.
Yeah.
And we're going to see the library, let us put some information up too. So we'll be around town with the mascot and you'll see it.
So I guess we need a motion. Are people comfortable with doing the two events in one motion or do you?
As long as I can get a duck, yeah.
Sean, with that, would you like?
I move to approve the, both the public gathering applications.
For?
I'm trying to find the other one. High school graduation, that one. That's kind of important. And the, the duck event on May 29th at Flower Bridge.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It is approved unanimously. Congratulations. You're welcome to stay, but. We're kind of seeing a theme here.
You could leave a duck for, you know.
Excellent. Very much appreciated. Okay, then we will now go on to item D, which was review and possibly approve the 2015 JAG Violence Crime Prevention Grant in the amount of $18,000 with the creation of a special revenue fund. This grant will enable the town to purchase a computer, server, video software, storage, and a wireless video transfer from police cruisers to the server. This used to be done manually, so it was very labor-intensive. This is a much more efficient way to do this. Joe, would you like to speak to the special revenue fund? This is basically standard fare when we receive a grant, we need a place to park it to process it.
Correct. This grant actually has a way of recurring every couple of years, so it's not a bad idea to set up a special revenue fund for it.
Are there any questions?
Is there a match?
I don't believe so. I think the JAG is traditionally just.
And I see the words in the submission here resulted in a significant reduction in the Department's CNR. Does that mean that they already lowered that request or we're going to endorse?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. They're already. A last.
So we've never done this before. This is a new special revenue fund.
So I would need a motion to accept the JAG Violence Prevention Grant in the amount of $18,000 and to create a special revenue fund to receive and process the grant funds. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item E. You have before you a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the refunding of the 2010-2011 general obligation bonds. Today's borrowing rates are currently below those in 2010-2011. In conjunction with the new bond issuance, the town has the opportunity to refund some of this outstanding debt with estimated savings anticipated, and we don't have the exact number yet, but in the range of, we're anticipating $100,000 to $175,000 in the years after fiscal year 2015. Joe, would you like to speak to that?
So, obviously it's kind of straightforward. This is a refinancing of any outstanding debt that you guys have. I asked for roughly about $10 million available. I'm not sure which years we'll actually go and refund, but we're going to wrap this in with the, the other bond offering that we have going on over the next six weeks. So it makes sense. It's a good time to do a refunding is when, when you're actually going out to bond, because then you wrap in all the closing costs and everything. There's economies of scale with it.
That makes sense. Is there, are we reissuing 10-year terms or are we continuing with the original term?
No, no, no. There's no extension of any of the payments.
So we're not going to screw up the, the whole schedule? Okay.
No.
That was actually a very good question.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Not exactly.
I figured you thought of it. That's why I asked the question.
Any further questions for Mr. Mancini? Mr. Mancini is our Director of Finance for the, those people in the public who may not know who he is. All right. With that, I will take a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the refunding of the 2010-2011 general obligation bonds. And this does need to be read into the, I mean, it's just that first paragraph that you have on your first page, beginning with resolve.
I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
I'll second it.
So, resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Simsbury hereby adopts the resolution presented to this meeting authorizing the issuance of bonds to refund all or a portion of the town's $4,785,000 general obligation bonds issued of 2010 and the town's $5,000,000 general obligation bonds issued of 2011. A copy of the resolution shall be inserted in or attached to the minutes of this meeting and made a part thereof.
And so we do not, I confirmed with Joe, we do not need to read the following two pages. Those will be inserted in the minutes.
Bless you.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item F in your packets. We have before you a motion to request, to approve a request from Simsbury Farms Performing Arts Center for the Town of Simsbury to co-sponsor the July 3rd and September 11th fireworks display and execute a contract with the American Thunder Fireworks. We have Ferg here and I'll let him speak to that motion. It's coming from the Performing Arts Center.
Ferg Johnson, Three Fox Den, Westminster. I'm here to, on behalf of the Performing Arts Board, to thank the Town of Simsbury and the Westminster School, that's Westminster Master School, I always do that, for contributing the $5,000 to pay for the 4th of July fireworks this year, as they did last year. And it's a very great example of town gown for them to do that, and we're very appreciative. And not only, just a sidelight is, not only did they provide the money last year and this year, but they send their students down to pick up the campus down there. So, I mean, it's just, it's a great effort. And if anyone out there listening is anxious to provide fireworks for September Fest, we're looking for a similar co-sponsors here for the Town of Simsbury, and we always appreciate the support. Mr. Hensley was holding up this poster, and I'm sorry that the Boy Scouts have left, but we're looking for any and all volunteers. These are all around town. You can sign up and, I mean, Boy Scouts, I think it'd be great at putting numbers on chairs and, and there are tons of jobs and we just have a great concert series, so we, we look for your support. And any questions about the fireworks, but I, again, we appreciate the town helping a lot.
I noticed on the schedule here, Ferg, there's no heavy guns, especially the 10 and 12-inch shells. Can we get those added in to really light up the sky? I love fireworks. Come on now.
This is the same company that you've used in the past or is this a new?
Ducks and fireworks.
Is this the same vendor you've used in the past?
Yes, same one. They've always done it, made it September 1st.
And this is the same arrangement we did last year, correct?
Yeah. It's a co-sponsorship and a work.
And it was a great display. Bless you.
We're hoping that I can be back here and say, hey, how about September 1st? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. May I have a motion to co-sponsor the July 3rd and September 11th fireworks display and execute a contract with the American Thunder Fireworks? So moved.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved unanimously. Here's where it gets exciting. We have before you a request to set the date for the automatic referendum pursuant to Section 406 of the Town Charter for Tuesday, May 5th, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Henry James Memorial School. There is no submission with this because we are literally just taking the motion off the agenda, we're just setting the date.
Oh, okay.
So, may I have a motion to set the date of Tuesday, May 5th, 2015, from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Henry James Memorial School for the automatic referendum?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Before you, you have a motion to approve borrowing for items included in the capital improvement plan. Bond council has reviewed these, and they are before you tonight. It does, this is a long one. We do need to read the paragraph on the first page and then we do need to read the entirety of the second page. We do not need to read the full 40-page document that accompanies it, but I wanted to let folks know that if anyone was to look at it, I have the full copy in my office.
Oh, that's the one we got an email from?
Yeah. Joe, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you.
I was kind of ready. I was kind of hoping you were going to make Chris read the first 10 pages, so.
I'm ready, Joe. I'm ready.
So basically, this is every capital project that you guys approved, including the small ones, even though we're not, ultimately, we're not going to bond for them. Just to kind of give you guys a little bit of background, what the Board of Finance is doing right now. You guys approved a $6.166 million capital budget for next year. They're not going to use all that. It's going to be about $5.95 million. So that balance is actually going to go to pay for some of these projects. So that capital is going to be treated a little bit differently going forward, but we don't know the final numbers until we actually do the financing and the refunding. But, yeah, this is the world I live in. This is, this is some boring stuff.
That's very exciting. Well, I'm pleased to be here with you tonight too. Could change these motions, and as is our practice, we generally go with the freshman member to make this motion because we love him so much.
Well, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question before we move on? So we're going to have approved bonds hanging out there that we're never going to bond?
For a very short period of time, after which I'll have to be obligated, so the facility no longer show on the audit.
So you will be doing that?
Yeah.
Do you come back to us?
No, for finance.
For finance, definitely.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, because again, I trust everybody here now, but as soon as the deck changes, someone else could theoretically go out with this authorization and bond.
That's what's going to happen.
It's, it's not going to happen.
Hypothetically, because, you know, we're already going to move the money over there at the start of the next fiscal year, so it was going to, that'd be interesting. You'd have twice the revenue.
The point is, we have the controls in place. Obviously, the Finance Director, you're, you're well-equipped to be able to handle this. It's standard procedure. This is, this is how we do it nearly every year.
Correct. This is actually how you guys used to do it back, what, 15 years ago?
Correct.
So this is the right way to do it. So everybody's going to be approving the capital number that we presented to them, and you're going to choose the best way to pay for those items in consultation with what the Board of Finance authorizes. Right? So everything is above board. This is all perfectly legitimate. We've done this in the past. And we're in good hands.
Exactly. Any other questions?
Sorry.
No, no. Do you have another one?
No, that's it.
Anyone else? With that, I will take a motion from Chris.
All right. Sean, I'm going to try to measure up to when you did this during the budget process, which I was quite impressed. All right. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the following projects, which were not included in the town's capital improvement plan for the ensuing year, but the need to fund such projects is in the best interests of the town. Resolved, upon motion duly made, seconded, and adopted, the reading into the minutes of the full text of the resolution set out below is waived. Copies of the resolutions have been made available to those in attendance and is recorded in these records immediately preceding these minutes. First category, general purpose projects. Simsbury Farms rink pool improvements, asterisk to a note below, in the amount of $1,100,000. Park improvements, $508,000. Open space planning and improvements, $145,000. We tog planning Route 10 and code preparation work, $57,000. Salt shed replacement, $375,000. Municipal building renovations, $50,000. Dam evaluations and repairs, $30,000. Public Works complex infrastructure improvements, $280,000. Town hall site and safety improvements, $45,000. Portable generator, generator infrastructure, $80,000. Asterisk, project planning fund, $28,000. Various drain improvements, $175,000. Total for category general purpose projects, $2,873,000. Next category, water pollution control projects. Sewer main extensions, $371,000. Inline grinder and screen replacement, $260,000. Hot metal center area sewer repairs, $135,000. West Mountain Road area sewer interceptor design, $50,000. Portable generator, $80,000. Asterisk. Portable 6-inch dry prime pump, $72,000. Total for category water pollution control projects, $968,000. Board of Education projects. District network infrastructure, $200,000. Climate control, Phase 1 through 7 buildings, $2,150,000. Central school roof replacement, $770,000. Total for Board of Education projects, $3,120,000. Total proposed capital improvement projects, $6,961,000. Asterisk note at the bottom, one resolution reflects appropriation of $80,000 from Sewer Use Fund and $80,000 borrowing authorization.
I'll second that with a question. That first asterisk is out of place?
I believe the first asterisk is for, the ones on the left are those going to referendum, the ones on the right, we should have used a different symbol.
So the ref, the asterisk has no, on the Simsbury Farms rink pool improvements, has no reference to the $80,000 at the bottom.
Correct.
It's a different asterisk.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
And that's the same with the climate control. The climate control and the Simsbury rink pool improvements are both asterisks because those are the questions that are going to referendum.
Absolutely.
The number asterisk are the ones referred to the 80, and we will color-code it next time.
Sorry.
Did you need to reread it, Sean?
No, you're good. That's why I made a question. Didn't ask for.
Good question.
You're good.
All right. So, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We go on to item I. You have before you a motion to approve the referendum questions as contained in the resolutions. We, actually, there will be five referendum questions, but this board only approves the last two. The first three are approved by the Board of Finance. So, these questions are coming before you. So, we do need to read these referendum questions into the minutes. So, I will take a motion to read these questions.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
So, this will be question four. Shall the Town of Simsbury appropriate $1,100,000 for improvements to the Simsbury Farms skating rink and pools, and authorize bonds and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation? Question five. Shall the Town of Simsbury appropriate $2,150,000 for installation of climate control improvements at the Simsbury High School, Henry James Memorial School, Central School, Latimer School, Squadron Line School, Terrifield School, and Tooton Hill School, and authorize bond and notes in the same amount to finance said appropriation?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? These are, these were reviewed by Council and Bond Council, so that's why. They are coming to you. They're fairly prescribed, and so we get what we get. So, we have a motion. We have a second. No further questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Before you, we have the budget mailer that will go out to residents, and we need to get your approval for this. This project, the mailer, was done in collaboration with the Board of Education, and through, our Town Council had to review it through the SEC and make sure we are in compliance. You are not allowed to be an advocate of the budget. This is purely informational, so it does go through a rather rigid approval process. It does follow the same form as last year because the approval process is so rigid. We try to keep the similar form. Does anyone have any questions about this?
Do you have the Town Court's permission to use this seal?
Tom?
I imagine that we.
I tried to give you an out on this one.
We can accomplish that.
In light of our new policy, just make sure that.
I'm sure this will be approved.
I would also love to see an amendment to that policy, but.
Oh, we are, they are, actually. There's a draft out there. They are working on it.
Sorry, I had to ask.
You're killing me. All right.
The Board of Education information, that's all provided by the Board of Ed, and we're going to approve it on, as one mailer. Are they approving it?
I think only this, but we.
Separate?
No, we're the only board that, we are mailing it, so it's our approvals, but it did go through Mr. Curtis and his department is, they provided us the information. Actually, Martha Hogan is the person who made the flyer, so it went through the Board of Education. They have absolutely had ample opportunity to review it.
Yeah, okay.
If I may, Lisa, this is still, before Council, we anticipate that, because it models very closely what we did last year, that there will be no issue with it, but any approval tonight should be subject to final approval by Town Council.
So, with that, may I have a motion to approve the townwide budget mailer pending for final approval by Town Council?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item K. Tom Cook and, Joe, good night, Joe. Thank you.
Hi, Joe.
Moving on to item K, you have before you, consider possible 824 referral. That's Connecticut General Statutes, Section 824, referral to planning for Town Forest Road land transfer. And Tom, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. The short version here is that we've been trying to get a natural gas line, not only to the town garage, but to Tooton Hill School for some time. CNG has been working with us on that. In order to accomplish that, we will need essentially ownership of the road, of Town Forest Road, as indicated in the material supplied to you. This, Jeff Shea has been working closely with Town Council on this. There are some, it is, it is not completely without its risk, as with everything you do with the state. They're not about to let you get on to do environmental testing, and they're not about to give you any kind of guarantees with respect to title. I don't know that those are particularly significant risks in this case, but in the interest of full disclosure, they are there. The proposal doesn't come with any major costs. We bear the cost of filing fees. The town has historically taken care of the road because that's how you get to the town garage, so that it's, there will not be any additional cost there. If ultimately the exchange is approved, we end up getting slightly more land than we're giving away. But, one of the key steps before any real decisions made on this is to see, is the 824 referral to planning. So, that's, that is all that's before you tonight. If you have questions about the underlying engineering details, I'm not your guy, but I can get questions back to Jeff on it. I think it's actually fairly straightforward in terms of what the goal is.
And it will come back to us for a decision.
Absolutely.
This is just the first, this is to refer to planning at this point.
That's exactly right.
Is there any comment from adjoining landowners, if there are any, or anything like that?
No, I mean, and this is really, you have to look far and wide to find an adjoining landowner.
Just make sure there was no.
It's a good question.
Just so I understand it, we're giving the state Nimrod and we're taking Town Forest?
There are a couple of triangles, as I understand, that would show the, let's see. Not particularly.
No, the triangle, Nimrod, not actually Nimrod?
It's actually the, I would assume this would be, if you were going from the Town Highway Garage to Tooton Hill School, this would actually be the parcel on the left side of the road.
I think that's right.
That's what it shows, yeah.
Taken. I get that, right?
Yeah. And, well, the part, yeah, we're taking, we're taking Town Forest Road. We're taking ownership of Town Forest.
So, you're talking about the left as you go up the dirt road?
Right.
Okay, so you make that corner and then pass the ball field, pass the.
Getting away from the ball.
Billion up there on the left in the woods.
I think that's right.
And that actually bugs our property, right?
Yes, that's correct. It doesn't bug us.
Okay. No, no, first you got the state forest, then you got us.
Is that wrong? Because I thought Jeff said it's part of it.
First it's them, then it's us, because that's where the new, is that the walker backs up there now, right? A little bit further up the hill.
Yep.
The farther up.
If you go to the color page, you can see the Town of Simsbury geographic information parceled, if it can be conveyed to the State of Connecticut, parcel B, conveyed to the State of Connecticut, and parcel C to be conveyed to the Town of Simsbury. It's, do you guys have back?
Yeah, no, I got it now. I'm sorry. I just, because I saw Nimrod on here. I wanted to make sure we weren't giving away Nimrods, because that would cause issues from a plowing standpoint. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Actually, I think the road is technically on state property as it cuts up that hill.
I think that's part of the need to do this, right? Thank you.
Yeah. Cool. I had no idea we did.
And again, this will go through planning for like a substantive review. They are in a position, I think, to do that a little better than we are at this point, so that's why we do make that referral. They'll do a detailed review, and then when it comes to us, we'll have Jeff Shea walk us through the exact steps. But because this is just a referral, we didn't have him here tonight.
All right. So, I move that pursuant to General Statute 8-24, the proposed mutual exchange of property between the Town of Simsbury and the State of Connecticut to provide a continuous public right-of-way on Town Forest Road to the Planning Commission for its review and report.
Very welcome.
I'll second that. So, we have them. May, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Moving on now to other reports. We have some, and as you know, this is spring break for many parents, and Mr. Roy is enjoying some time with his family, so he is not here tonight, but we do have a couple of updates from him. You had in your pack, it's a memo about the overtime budget. I'll just go through for the public. Our overtime budget for fiscal year 2015 was scheduled at $136,850. We are expected to exceed that budget by $64,000. We are estimating that there will be additional overtime of about $4,000 as the season comes to an end. Our salt budget for fiscal year 2015 was $220,000. We are, we know that we have exceeded that budget by $17,549. And for parts and supplies, and that's for, you know, our trucks took a tremendous amount of wear and tear with the 43 storms on solid applications. Ms. Coe is correct. We did not use sand, and I apologize if I use the word sand. $102,000. We are $21,000 in excess of that budget.
We doing these now, or are we waiting till the end of the year?
No, this is just a report. We are not asking for the transfers at this point. Just to, in the interest of full disclosure, to keep you updated on where we are. I had asked Mr. Roy, because I am convinced that the winter is over.
From your.
Watch it. I hope you're right, my friend.
It's going to be a long weekend.
I just wanted to just bring that to your attention, so that when you see it at transfer time, this will not be a surprise. And we have known about this. We've reported over the last few months. Numbers, we have known when we've known them, and we try to give you more accurate numbers as the season concludes.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate that, Sean.
You're welcome.
And obviously, I mean, Tom Roy's group did a phenomenal job, as did all Town staff this year. I mean, again, I think we're lucky to have them and the management of it, because it could have been a lot more. It could have been, you know, bigger numbers and more challenges. But I know they, they do a phenomenal job at not only keeping the roads open, but trying to keep the cost down. So, really appreciate all that work, so.
Yeah, thank you. And our, our public work staff really works long hours, hard hours, and really was very thoughtful to our community, because out of their way to try and do it as carefully as they can, given that they're driving massive trucks.
We're very lucky.
With a lot of snow.
With a lot of snow. So, thank you to our public work staff and to Mr. Tom Roy, who cannot be with us tonight. And with that, we, as I have mentioned in the past, we have updates on the Senior Center project every meeting, and I have Tom here tonight to give us a brief update on where we are.
And it will be very brief. We have issued an RFP for the architect. So, and one of the pieces of business that remains for you to address tonight is appointing the architect's selection board, but that's underway. Another, another big piece of this will be to get some professional consultation on development of program. So, the working group has talked about that. We're looking for, trying to identify good potential suppliers, but that I anticipate will be, an RFP will be forthcoming on that fairly shortly as well. I'm forgetting something, and I can't.
The committee?
We got the committee.
We're going to do that later.
Appointments and resignations. We'll go ahead and do that there.
Yep. We'll be meeting, I think, with the survey people this week. So, I think right now, it's, Town staff is really in the blocking and tackling mode. They'll be taking, they'll be starting the environmental review issues as well this week. So, I think everything, everything is on track right now moving forward.
Thank you for your efforts. That's a massive undertaking for our Town staff, and it requires the coordination of many department heads and many boards. So, we appreciate everyone's attention to this and, and how seriously everyone is taking this.
Lisa, could I just?
Of course.
I sat in as the liaison to that committee, and I can second that in the energy and ideas that are coming out of Town staff. It's not surprising, but it's, it's great to hear that firsthand and to work with you folks on that. And the consultant or the expert on the programming, I think, is a really great idea that came out of that group. Essentially, what it does is it gives us an advocate at the table from the senior community side to really make sure that we get the programming right, and it doesn't get lost in the design, so that we have another layer of independence there. Somebody that's really going to make sure that if we need a room that's X-big, we're holding the architect accountable, and somebody's, there's a professional at the table to really kind of pay attention to our needs there, but also not to just go down the road of an architect's dream and build something that perhaps we don't need, want, or can afford. So, it's, there's, it's a really good idea, I think, to make sure that spending a little bit of money upfront to save us time and money down the road and get the right outcome, I think, is, is where we're going with that. So, I applaud Town staff for coming up with that idea. I think.
And also, that was in conjunction, actually, with Peggy Shanks and Mike Long made that suggestion a few months ago.
That's a scary combination.
Yeah. So, we have bipartisan support for that. No, but you're right. What this really does is it gives us the professionals, someone with expertise in senior issues, who can make sure that we're offering the right programming and a objective, taking a look at all our programming across the town and what we need.
And an appropriate space.
Correct.
That's the main.
The whole process as we're moving forward is, is two things. It has, I think, more transparency than the average construction project ever will. But as Sean was just pointing out, there are some good checks and balances built into this as well to make sure that views are being appropriately represented.
So, thank you for that, and I appreciate your efforts. And Sean, I appreciate your willingness to serve on that as an advisor.
Totally.
We will now move on to appointments and resignations. I'd ask for a motion to amend the agenda to accept the.
Don't amend it yet.
What?
Don't amend it yet.
No.
Accept the resignation first, then amend it.
Oh, well, you're going to get me out of order.
Sorry.
You're right. Okay.
Because you can't.
All right, got it.
Can't replace it.
Got it.
One's got to go.
Got it.
Sorry.
May I have a motion to accept the resignation of Robert Hagney as a Republican, as a regular member of the Board of Ethics effective April 2nd, 2015?
Prove that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to accept the resignation of Angela Campetti, Republican, as a regular member of the Tourism Committee effective February 24th, 2015, with our thanks?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And with our thanks to Robert Hagney. I think I forgot to say that. May I have a motion to reappoint Kathleen H. Coffey, commonly known as Kay, unaffiliated, as a regular member of the Simsbury Housing Authority, with an expiration date of April 1, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And may I have a motion to appoint the Senior Community Center Architect Selection Committee? You should have received a new form. We had submitted you one that was in error. Do you have the newest one?
I do. I'm just checking. I'm not sure which is which.
We took out the open space because the chair of open space is me and my staff, I consider them the means anyway, so it's not necessary to appoint me.
Joanne did hand out, hand that out in additional information, so.
Should be two, one that's crossed out, and then another just for a person.
And the open space committee, just to, you know, is made up of conservation planning and zoning, and then one a large person. So, they, all these boards will see their product as well throughout the process. So, we have a membership of the Architect Selection Committee Chair will be the Public Building Committee Chair, who has done work in the past, and he'll serve as chairs of this committee. Chair, a membership of the Architect Selection Committee will be Chair of Conservation Commission or Designee. Chair of Culture Parks and Recreation Committee, or Designee. Chair of Design Review Board, or Designee. Chair of Aging and Disability Commission, we have Ed Lamontaine here, or is Designee. Miki LaCoras Beck, Director of Social Services, who is also in charge, she's the supervisor of the Senior Center. Jeff Shea, Town Engineer, and Tom Roy, Director of Public Works, who is, works on our town buildings. So, all of them will be involved.
Move that.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now, may I have a motion to amend the agenda to consider the appointments of Thomas Reckon and Christopher Meel.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I please have a motion to appoint Thomas Reckon to the Ethics Commission in succession of Rob Hagney, Hagney, with an expiration date of January 1, 2017?
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. May I please have a motion to appoint Christopher M. Meel to the Economic Development Commission in succession of Gary Doran Bush, with an expiration date of January 1, 2020?
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you for your indulgence on it, Lisa. I appreciate it.
Yeah, my pleasure. Moving on to the minutes. I'd like to thank our clerk, who works very hard on these. There were a lot of minutes in this last month, so thank you for your efforts on that. You have before you several minutes. We'll begin with special minutes of March 23rd, 2015. Does anyone need to, I actually do have one change on that. So, I will make a motion to amend those minutes. Do you have a second?
I'm second. I'm sorry.
That's okay. We have Sue Mancino. It's Sue Mancino, M-A-S-I-N-O. That's the only correction I had. Oh, I'm sorry, and that's on the bottom of the first page, the first name in the last paragraph. Do you see that, Cap?
Those are the regular.
You're on the regular meeting minutes. We were on the special meeting. I'm sorry. That's why I was confused.
Sorry about that. No, never mind. I will draw my motion. You're right.
We're good on the special ones, I think.
So, the special meeting.
So, does anyone have any motions to amend on the others? Okay. So, I will make a motion to amend the regular meeting of March 23rd, 2015, bottom of the page, changing Susan Mancino to Susan Mancino, M-A-S-I-N-O.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, since we are, no other motions to amend, those minutes will stand. We go on to Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports. Does anyone have any reports they'd like to make? At this point, seeing none. I will take a motion to go into executive session to discuss Hot Meadow Street LLC versus Town of Simsbury with Town Council update.
Move that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will move to executive session in the first block of the office.